This conference will now be recorded.
I did cash. I did cash. I barely got home, got back up.
But Mark's putting the big listen down there. That's it out.
No one had opened.
First layer, basically. And I think my study was here. From the school. Other than others, maybe.
Not in the city.
I carried it. She was the first CNN CPA. First came from two hundred and fifty. She wrote. She got us to.
We'll call this meeting the Sedalia City Council or order. We'll start off with prayer and pledge of allegiance. Chapel Mattson, you have the lead for prayer.
If you please stand as able and join me in our invocation this evening. Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance to Sedalia City Council members, mayor, administrator, staff, and all who serve us, meet to hear about and discuss important issues that affect our city, its people, and the general community. We are grateful for the service of these people and all of their dedication. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, hospital, EMTs, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at the peril of their own lives. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many have fought and died to great and preserve for these 246 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all who serve today, military and civilian, here and throughout the world, protecting this country from threats from without and sadly threats from within. And now, as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the pride and the honor of the United States of America and to the regardless for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Here.
First item on our agenda is approval of the previous session's minutes. We have the council meeting minutes dated February 22nd, 2023. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Next item is the meeting minutes from the budget work session dated February 27th, 2023. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Now, we have the roll call of the very standing committees. Up first is Finance Administration Chairman Marshall. You have the floor.
I have five items on my report tonight. Up first is a presentation by Norm Lucas from Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission. If you will remember, council discussed if the city should continue funding in the budget. This presentation is to aid us in making that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having me here with me tonight.
Sorry.
So that I can point out the value and inform you about the value that the Regional Planning Commission has to the city of Sedalia. I'm going to start by just saying that, as with every other community, we assess the dues that are annually to be paid to the commission on a population basis. It's a big whopping 38 cents per person in the community, just like every other jurisdiction within our four counties. Now, that being said, that adds up to $8,127 a year. And I wanted to point out first the past value that we brought to Sedalia recently, and then go through a couple of points having to do with the present value that we give to you and the future value that we intend to continue if we can in partnership with you, because that is how we view our relationship with the city of Sedalia. It is a partnership. In the past, from July 2020 to June 2022, the Regional Planning Commission of its own volition and decision entered into a contract at the beginning of the pandemic, not knowing what the pandemic might bring for businesses in our region, just like no one else had any idea what the pandemic and its effects might do to businesses. That contract was with the Economic Development Corporation for Pettis County and Sedalia, and it was an amount of $50,000 that we made available to EDSPC specifically to assure that every Sedalia business could get help from your local economic development office, finding their way through the pandemic in whatever means of help or ways of help they might come to realize they needed. At the same time, we offered and then gave, entered into a contract with State Perit Community College, a contract for $40,000 over that two-year period, so that they could put together and present business resilience training and training to help small businesses make a better and stronger online presence in case those would become necessary during the pandemic, and indeed those did become necessary, and those offerings were taken advantage of by folks, businesses in Sedalia. That's the past. Let's talk a little bit about the present. One of the programs we operate is called RSOC, Regional Homeland Security, and through the RSOC, we offer state grants. We administer those RSOC grants through our office. I understand that there is an outside possibility that the fire department here in Sedalia may want to apply for RSOC funds coming up in 2023, perhaps for radios. We've funded radios and other kinds of emergency operational equipment throughout the region, and the only thing that comes in the way of a constraint with the equipment that we supply is that those pieces of equipment become deployable to other parts of the region in the case of a major disaster. So, for example, these radios that we, if the fire department were to get the grant for them, would offer to the city of Sedalia, could also be used by another agency if they had a tornado or if they had some other flood or something that would happen that would necessitate them asking for a little bit of equipment to help them get over the hump. Now that I've explained the RSOC program, I want to also explain that it is the program that comes with the very least of state funding for administrative services, and so RSOC is the most dependent of all the programs that we run on the dues of our partners across the region. Without our dues from our partners, the RSOC problem, the RSOC program becomes an RSOC problem. I also like to speak about our Transportation Advisory Committee. Now fortunately, you have a wonderful representative on that committee right now, namely your mayor, and since Mayor Dawson came on board in August of '21, Sedalia has had opportunity to bring me into consideration via the committee despite MODOT losing twice their area engineer for our four counties. First, they lost Rich Shipley to go to the summit office, and now it appears that Ben McCabe has been lured away to the west to another area engineer office, and we will again be without an area engineer. Fortunately for Sedalia and the remainder of our partners in our four counties, you can always bring your project leads to MODOT through the Regional Planning Commission Transportation Advisory Committee, and of course, the natural conduit for that to happen is through your mayor, who is on the TAC as a member. Keep in mind that even if there were an area engineer for our region in place, the RPC Transportation Committee remains the primary way in which MODOT considers regional needs for improvements. I want to go on to speak a little bit about rural broadband, because our agency, like all the other regional commissions across the state, has become involved with the State Department of Economic Development Office of Broadband Development. We kicked off that partnership with the State Department of Economic Development by holding a meeting here in Sedalia, November 2nd of last year, in which we allowed the state to start gathering comments from the public, so that those comments could be made part of the record with which the state would proceed towards a broadband plan for the state. That plan being to try to get broadband to every unserved and underserved household in Missouri. It's a big task. We have a lot of work in front of us. I would like to continue that work, specifically with you hand in hand as partner, so that no parts of Sedalia are missed by this opportunity to get people connected if they're unserved and to get people good connections if they are underserved. I'd like to point out that our agency has also been instrumental in helping, along with all the other regional planning commissions statewide, in challenging the FCC broadband connection map. You may have heard about the inaccuracies in that FCC map that have allowed internet service providers to claim, "Oh, we're providing wonderful connectivity for these people in these communities," when in fact, those same people, when they try and go online, either can't get anything done or they find themselves faced with alarming monthly bills for just a very minimal connection. We're trying to fight that fight and get that kind of a goal in our sights right now, and I was very pleased when they asked me, "Where could we start the process with a listing session?" And I could offer the city of Sedalia as the place to start. The next item I'd like to talk about is our hazard mitigation planning. Every five years, the hazard mitigation plan for the county, including Sedalia, must be updated, and I say must because if you do not have or if you are not part of the hazard mitigation plan, then you cannot qualify for the highest rate of reimbursement from FEMA should a disaster strike. Now, God forbid we should have any kind of a disaster. That's the last thing anybody wants, but in the case that we would see something like that, I would certainly not want to see the city of Sedalia unable to obtain the kind of FEMA reimbursement necessary to put public infrastructure back the way it was before the disaster. Our goal is to have your plan updated in the most professional manner possible with your input as partners, and then get it through the FEMA and the FEMA reviewers, so that it stands in such a way that if something were to happen, there's no question that Sedalia would qualify for the highest rate of reimbursement after the disaster. And then last but not least, I want to point out that should Sedalia not continue as a partner with the Regional Planning Commission, that does knock Sedalia out of contention for certain kinds of grants that are available through the federal government. Probably the most important of these, and the only one that I'll talk about tonight because I don't want to waste your time, is with the economic development administration. I have had singular good fortune applying for Economic Development Administration funds for our communities around this region in the short four and a half years that I've been working with the Regional Planning Commission. The city of Lexington is currently benefiting from a $6 million EDA grant that was applied for through our office by which they're having their water treatment plant replaced. You may remember the news from the flood of 2017, during which the folks down in Lexington had to fight flood to keep the river out of their water treatment plant. Now the water treatment plant is going to be up on the bluff where it belongs. After this $6 million grant, they're going to be able to use well water instead of having to draw water right out of the river. Another EDA grant that I was able to get from the city of Odessa is allowing them to study well relocation, because Odessa, just like Lexington, has a water supply that can be threatened by river flood. And then another EDA grant that I was able to get in our region was the one for the Marshall Junction Visitor Center, which is a $1,600,000 grant to get that visitor center constructed. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. I don't want to be here and keep you from your other very important business. I just want to point out what kind of value we've brought to the community in the past, what we're working on presently, and what we would like to do in the future, including bringing your hazard mitigation plan up to date, and then helping you take advantage of those funding opportunities which may arise and we may be able to help you with.
Executive Director Lucas, that McCabe leaving, that comes as quite a blow. We've built a pretty good relationship with him, I thought, and we're working well.
Ditto.
Do you have any idea on the timeline for his replacement?
All I can tell you is it took him over seven months to find him to replace Richard Shipley, and I dread the idea of having to go while sharing an area engineer. That's what MODOT's going to stick us with for the next seven months, where his attention is split between two areas. But that's just where we're at.
Do you have any idea who the interim is or who will be sharing? Council, do you have any questions or anything?
You brought up at the beginning that one of the items that possibly we would not be able to work on or we would not be able to receive is the EDA grant. Are you saying that the EDA grant is only applicable through Pioneer Trails?
If you're a member of the Economic Development District where your community is found, you're eligible.
But we're eligible, but are we only applicable through Pioneer Trails?
Yes.
So we went up here. So you brought up two or three other communities. When was the last time that you worked on an EDA grant for Sedalia?
It's been, actually, I have not been here in Pioneer Trails as executive director long enough to have done that.
Okay. So is that because you have decided not to, or is that because Pioneer Trails hasn't approached us for that?
I have not had any project presented to me that looked like it would be a good EDA project, but that's not to say that I don't know of any that could possibly become a good EDA project if I had good communication about the project and had the chance to really talk through what the city needs.
So over the last year then, what specific instances has Pioneer Trails been able to help us? Because from what we've heard from our department heads is, along with the grant writing, we've approached Pioneer Trails on a couple of instances, and we've been either declined or been told that we're not going to receive help, and so we've had to apply for those grants on our own, and we ended up, I believe, receiving them from us. So what instances has Pioneer Trails been able to help us on with the list last year?
I think a couple of instances where we thought there might be the possibility of a community development block grant for Sedalia, and it just did not work out. In those instances, the way that the project was cast and the place for the project to take place, those were ineligible activities that did not fit the CDVG criteria. So I have not had time to explore all of the various kinds of grants with staff. I would say after January, it seemed like from November to January, I had really good communication with staff, and then for whatever reason, that seems to have fallen off.
So I know that we have asked for help with a couple intersections, one specifically that we've kind of been, yeah, it's up on this list, it's high up on the list, well then it's number five on the fourth list down. So the intersection of Limit and 32nd Street, we've asked multiple times for help with, and the last three years, there's been 41 accidents in that intersection. It's extremely dangerous, and I think it's pretty important that we look at that. So that for our.
Well, you know, I actually speak louder words.
Yeah, that's a big deal for us. So, yeah, do you have any idea where we're at on that or if there would be?
I have the needs list, and I have the Missouri High Priority on public needs list, because I anticipate this could be a question.
Sure.
And let me make clear, the Regional Planning Commission is responsible for assembling this list, the regional needs list, which we then pass up to MODOT. It is MODOT's decision then as to which of those projects wind up published in their high priority unfunded needs list.
So are we in that?
So let me bring it back on that one. Three years ago, we were going to be funded for that intersection, and the bridge at 65, Flat Creek End Bridge, for lack of a better term, was discovered to be a real problem, and we were set aside. That following year, would you please advocate again for us for this intersection, because we, I think we were funded and ready to go, and then they inspected that bridge, and it was an emergency situation. We had to step back for a year. So please try to get us into that highest priority for that.
And the intersection again is the intersection of?
It is Limit and 32nd Street.
65 Highway and 32nd.
65, sorry, 65 Highway, yes.
And 32nd. That intersection that's fed by Interstate Studios, everybody uses for a backdoor to the fairground.
I just roll the right there as well.
Those types of things.
Yeah, that's consistently been ranked by council as a priority within city of Sedalia fixing that. I know we had the traffic study done here two years ago.
Two years ago. But please look into that and see if they did step us back, see if they can really prioritize it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything further, Council?
I guess I would comment, though, I would disagree with you, Mr. Lucas, on the CDVG. We asked you to participate in that. The answer we got was not that it wasn't appropriate, it's that you all didn't have time. We actually applied for that grant and received it. So we asked for assistance, we were denied.
You were able to, and I'm sorry that we were at the time short staffed. We have finally gotten the community developer back, and we now have that person on staff in training, so we're back at full capacity. But yes, we did have a point, actually it was a year's worth of time, when like everybody else, we were just having trouble finding help.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct that it wasn't because you didn't qualify, because we, obviously we did, since we received the grant. So that was the reason why you didn't help us.
My memory was not.
And I would address to the lack of communication. You know, you picked the January that the communication has dried off. That's when it died off. We weren't getting help from you, so we were doing it ourselves as opposed to wasting time talking to you.
And that's understandable, but we are now back to full capacity, back to full staff, and as such, we stand ready to be your partner again.
Thank you for bringing that point to Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Director Lucas.
Next is a presentation by Administrator Shaw on the status of the budget development and to continue the discussion from our budget work session.
All right. Well, I will be a lot thicker, Ms. Bogus. So just to go through, to give you a few highlights of where we ended up at the last work session, and, you know, so to go back through, the first place to start, I thought was the items that we prioritized during our strategic planning session. And if you remember, there were 17 items that were ranked in OR, and so just to go through where we ended the work session and give you an update as to what's, you know, how those figure in the budget, if you will, excuse me. Rank number one was the police body worn camera upgrade, and that is funded, currently in the draft. Police specialized response team training and equipment is funded. Police recruitment incentives is funded. The fire pre-hire adding staff grant and grant funded was ranked number four. However, we have delayed that based off of, since we've delayed the construction of the, on the three fire stations, we don't see that we need to start that this fiscal year. The charter city process is funded. The fire higher flow and lower pressure attack package is funded. The fire medical UTB vehicle, we did put that in the draft, but then we made it grant dependent. Dangerous building stimulation funding level in $100,000 is funded. Rank number nine was the 353 neighborhood revitalization seat money, and as you recall, when we went through that, that was a major chunk that I recommend that we do not fund this year, since we do have about $500,000 set aside already in the redevelopment corporation. I think that will give us a good start on where we, those plans in that section right now anyway, and that would give us a significant amount of money to put towards the wages that I think we need to do this year. So that was, that was a big decision item, although it was ranked number nine, I still recommend that we do not fund that. Number 10 was the 2021 Building Code implementation, and that was funded. The administrative vehicle for the really mayor and administration was, we opted to put in allowance instead of the vehicle, for at least this year. Fire inspector vehicles, at the time that we did the strategic planning, we had a need for two of those, and now we only need one, and that one is funded. Fredy, the fire truck was put in as grant dependent again. If we can get a grant, then we will pursue that, but if not, we will not. Electronic plan review software and equipment is funded. Coming in at number 15 was an enforcement vehicle for the added staff position, and we have delayed that. They are using the pool car right now, and so we recommend that we continue doing that for another year. Retail recruitment consulting was not funded, and then the animal control updates, the older van, we put that in at a much lesser amount than what was proposed, since it came in at number 17, but we are putting in enough to make it mechanically sound, hopefully. So that's with the general fund. Transportation, there were seven items that were ranked there, and Transportation, there were seven items that were ranked there and the coming in at number one was add the aircraft mechanic and we did fund that at part-time though. Upgrade the airport fuel farm at $25,000 was funded. Remodel the old airport terminal. We do not have that designed yet, so we didn't put a number in there at such a disappointing time. Rental airplane was not funded. The hangar lighting upgrade was not funded. Self-service aviation fuel hardline was funded at a much lesser amount. We put aside $1,000 to see if we can get that done for that amount. Tea hanger storage was not funded. As far as the capital improvement plan, coming in at number one was the fire station one of three station model and that is funded. The stormwater project grant match was funded. The new fire engine for the third station was delayed only because we don't see that we'll need it this fiscal year, so we'll delay that till closer to time to the need. Clinton Road resurfacing, brand the 32nd Street was funded. 32nd Limit Lane additions was funded. Sidewalk and curb funding level, this one we have what was in this year's budget carried over to next year's budget just because of what we can get to. We anticipate this one to go, to carry over into the following fiscal year. So, it was really funded or delayed until then. Number seven was the State Fair and Main Roundabout was not funded and, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Number five was the item, I meant to point that out. Number five was the item that we just discussed with Mr. Lucas. So, and it is again funded as the cost share piece. State Fair Boulevard and Main Roundabout was not funded. The fire squad third vehicle was delayed to when was needed. Sidewalk 65, Highway 7 to Liberty Park Boulevard is not funded. Alley reactivation not funded. 50 Highway Katy Trail overpass, White Ening, again, cost share with MODOT was not funded. And then number 12 was the sidewalk, State Fair Boulevard 50 to Third to 65, not funded. 16th Street, Complete Street was not funded. The North Harding and Boonville, the 50 Highway to the airport, not funded. Monument and Wayfinding signings not funded. The 65 Highway ramps were not funded. The extended Winchester from 16th to Sacagawea is not funded. The Bike Way Amtrak Depot to Katy Depot is not funded. The extend Proenergy Drive to Oak Grove is not funded. Coming in at 20 was 65 Highway to Sacagawea Traffic Flight, not funded. And then the downtown Decatur lights came in at number 21 and is not funded. To look at a few other significant items or notable items, the step increase was funded. The cola at $1.50 per hour is funded. The Echo Community Center passes for employees is funded. The fire added overtime for training and department meetings is funded as well. The police four commander structure is funded. The cell phone data subscription is funded. MML Conference for Council is funded. MML Legislative Conference for Council is funded. Cleaning title work is included in the draft. Pioneer Trail Stues, what we were just talking about, at this point, it is unfunded, but we had Mr. Lucas give his presentation so that you all can reconsider that and we'll get to the spreadsheet here in a minute and you all can decide if you want to put that back in or leave it out. Replacement copiers is funded. Community Development Main Street Conference is funded. The fire medical bags and the fire supervac bags and the fire new skids are all funded. However, the fire new scene light poles are not included in the draft at this point and the fire LED light replacements is included and the Class A uniforms are not. Police Truenark machine is funded and it's funded out of the OQW fund settlement and the police four patrol vehicles are funded. Renamed Christmas lights is funded, but the added lights are not funded. The story District Expansion Survey is funded and the expansion of the 353 area is funded. Cemetery mower is included. The cemetery used club cab pickup is included. The animal control Wi-Fi extension is also included. The trap nigger release for feral cats program is funded. The animal control ordinances refresh is funded. The entry doors for City Hall is funded. City Hall break area is unfunded. The fire HQ concrete pad repair is funded. HQ, I'm sorry, is headquarters. Facilities maintenance carport is funded. The fleet maintenance replacement, the tire changer and this was for larger tires, is not funded. Economic development contract increase was leveled, was funded. And then the Christmas parade sponsorship is at this point not included, but you have, you requested some additional information, which we gathered, emailed out to you and then also I printed that out and laid it in front of you, so you have that and we will go through that again. The utility rate hearings are coming up and just to remind you there, we have recommended a water rate increase of 5%. The sewer rate's at 9.5% and no increases this year for sanitation. So, what's next? We will incorporate any changes as indicated by the consensus developed during this meeting. We have the opportunity if needed for another work session, next Monday, if you desire. A public hearing is scheduled at the beginning of your March 20th meeting for council to hear any comments or input from the citizens who'd like to revise regarding the budget, including the utility rates increases. And then council will consider during your 20th meeting adoption of the budget. However, if you want more time, we can extend all the way up to March 31st and you can hold special meetings or take as much time as you like to make the final decision. So, at this point, I can bring up again the spreadsheet that we have.
They can hear you.
Okay. So, again, we left the last meeting. This is our current net. We made $1,100 worth of adjustments in the current ending with $13,923 revenues over expenditures, leaving a fund balance of $9.4 million or 57.4%. The items that we changed during the meeting are highlighted here for you and then some comments regarding some of those things. So, I guess the first thing, if we specifically said we would readdress this one, and I heard from Mr. Lucas that that number is actually $8,200 now. So, anybody want to reconsider that? At your last meeting, you took a vote to take it out.
Yeah, I need a motion in a second to reconsider.
I'll approve it. I'll say that. You got a motion?
I probably should be motion. Yeah, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion to put it back in the budget?
No, just to consider it.
Oh, to talk about it? To talk about it, okay. Have a motion to reconsider it. Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor?
Yeah, mine.
All right. All those opposed? Okay, I'll open the floor up to council to discuss what their thoughts are on that.
I wasn't convinced by his presentation. I don't think there's anything that he can offer us that we can do ourselves. We've had this discussion now for three, four years, you know, I think we can do it better.
Well, Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we sat in that MML meeting Wednesday morning and the guy from the state DOT come up there and said that there was like $633 million allocated for the state to, for grants, people can put in for grants. And he wanted to make sure that everybody put in phone because if any money gets over, they lose it. After two years or so, they lose it. So, I know our people are doing that, so I don't see any reason to, that $8,000 would fix some pitches and things that need to be fixed, so.
I guess my question, the reason I wanted to talk about it was because I wanted to ask the question, can we offer them something else? Is it $8,000 or nothing or can we say here's four grand? He said it was 38 cents per population. I lost him in there. He kind of stopped or stuttered and I lost that comment, but it was based on population and it was some of, I thought he said 38 cents per person and then, does that, does that make sense? Forty, say 40 cents times 20, yeah, that makes $8,000, so that probably pencils.
So, then does the county pay for us since we're, because we're residents of Pettis County as well, so wouldn't we be considered in their population?
Yeah, don't know the answer to that. And so, can I then, so then that brings me to my one thought besides trying to get some clarity in whether or not we can offer them a portion of that. And then the second thing is, I do want to support Pettis County economic development. I think we get enough good out of Pettis County economic development, but I don't want to not fund it and cut something out from them, although I know they've got their own sources of funding. I want to at least talk about it.
Yeah, see, we spend $140,000 now for economic development.
I know. I understand we support them separately, but I would still pony up a little bit if Craig said we get our, she gets some benefit that eventually filters down to us from the regional planning group too.
I guess that'd be a question for her.
And so, we don't have to make that decision tonight, right? I mean, we can still talk to her and we can, so that's what my find out on all that.
And as far as hazards mitigation, we, again, we pay for part of the county's economic, first, yeah, emergency management. What's her name?
Ruben.
Ruben, thank you. I could not say her last name.
So, we're not in any jeopardy of losing anything there?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, this was news to me that it filed through the RPC. We put it together through our emergency management, our local emergency management. That plan, I don't remember RPC setting at the table when we were developing that plan. I mean, are you aware of anything, chief or chief?
Let's make sure before we, okay.
So, it's part of the council, but we go ahead and talk to Jessica, I'd like to Bell make it answer those questions.
Get the solid answer about emergency planning or the hazards. Now, I lost the term. The last thing we were talking about.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get the answer to those questions and then revisit this.
I've got more. Okay, so going back up to like the ninth line, I personally have some concern about $100,000 for the charter process until I know it's going to result in something that brings the city into the black. I don't mind doing it, but for the tune of $100,000, is that, I thought we just went down through it and said 100, that.
Yeah, when it's strategic planning, we estimated $100,000 and then.
Okay, so it's really 83,500. Okay, but, you know, I mean, that's the one place where I would be willing to spend $20,000 to get a good idea about economically, what are the precise benefits that are going to give us more bang for our buck from that? Something less than that and move some money into neighborhood revitalization. I don't see Brenda here. I'd like to get, you know, we've got $765,000 plus the grant for sidewalks, but we're bringing stuff forward from last year on that, so I'm really not sure exactly what we're spending this year on sidewalks. I was going to.
Yeah, that's a different funding source, so you're mixing capital improvement.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, point taken. You're right. And then, so then I'm probably wrong about the Class A. I wanted to ask chief about the Class A fire uniforms. Does Class A mean that they're the highest level of fire protection? Would you tell me precisely what Class A means?
Class A, you look open to fresh uniforms, sir.
So, it's, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's not a safety, okay, so that was off. You're good, you look good enough without, no, I mean, I don't. If it kept you safer in a fire, I was going to really advocate for that.
Yeah, we hope they never have to wear them because they usually wear them to go to school.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, Class A is a rating for fire in certain other situations too, so.
Yeah, I guess.
So, I guess my major thing is, if we're going to pursue this charter process, I'm a little reluctant to spend $83,500. I'd like to carve some of that off or bring to this group the idea that we carve some of that off and maybe use it. We didn't, we didn't fund anything for neighborhood revitalization. And then those things, I apologize to my other council members, but those things have just kind of come to light and I wanted to get it out there at some point.
Yeah, and of course, it's council's decision, I guess.
Right, I just.
I wanted to offer that when we went through the scoring process and all council members scored, this scored higher than the other items that you were talking about, so.
So, do you have a motion to put forward, Steve?
I, I don't mind, but you know, really, I think with regard to sunshine laws, we should do it in open session. So, yes, I think I'll make a motion that we reduce by some amount the charter process. There's just a lot to talk about in this particular area though, mayor. I mean.
Steve, I understand this is a budget. Just because this is a budget, it does not mean we're suspending it.
I understand.
Not if I even keep in mind.
I understand, but we are budgeting for it. I'll just make a motion in a second and ask for a second that we talk about it for four or five minutes within all the council. So, I'll make a motion that we talk about it now.
Do we talk about it some more? I mean, if the floor is open, council could talk about it right now if they want to.
Okay. So, I'm not seeing anybody talking, so I don't need to make a motion.
Would you like to make a motion to reduce it?
I would like to make a motion to reduce it to $30,000 and move more of that money to neighborhood revitalization. Does there exist a study of the charter government and its pluses and minuses?
That would be a, my idea regarding that would be to have Lauer come in and do a presentation regarding that, regarding the charter city process, with anything to that, et cetera.
Well, I'm new here. That would be helpful to me. I don't know about the rest of.
Yeah. But I do have a motion on the floor to reduce this to 30, what'd you say, 30,000? So, I'm looking for a second.
Guys, relax a second.
Yeah, guys, relax a second. All right, thank you. Moving along. Let's see, another item that we said that we were going to reconsider and you all had asked for more information, this was taken to a vote. It was for four ties. The mayor broke the tie in favor of taking it out, but then immediately asked for more information and to reconsider it at this meeting to be put back in. So, I would assume you would need, again, a motion to reconsider the vote taken to take it out, which would be a motion to put it back in the budget. Does anyone want to make their motion after receiving the information that has been received?
Can we look at the CB-CB fund?
What'd you say, Tom?
Can we look at the CB-CB?
Can we look at the CB CD fund?
Anything in particular?
Well, I, I know you, you, uh, that had concerns about their, uh, their reserves and still needing to spend that down, is that correct? I would be interested in maybe having a discussion, I'd look at their profit, you know, their, their expenses and income for that, and obviously, yeah, our two thousand dollars wouldn't make much of a difference, uh, taking it out for their, for their expenses or anything, but I, I do think the relationship that we have with the Chamber of Commerce is, is pretty vital to maintain. You, I wouldn't mind seeing maybe that going down to a thousand dollars and then it coming from the CB CD, CB CD fund.
I agree with Councilman Olden, Olden, uh, I don't think that we need to totally take it out, uh, we do definitely want to support our Christmas parade, but I, I think maybe we need to look at lowering the amount.
The way I feel about it, we support it in the fact that we furnish all the labor to set up the barricades, furnish the, the security, and we're paying all that overtime and that is not in their figures, okay? We're, and they're taking, they're taking, uh, money themselves and paying themselves, with the figures I got, we're paying themselves eleven hundred and some dollars, three people for overtime for the night before and, and the day of the parade, okay? Well, you know, we're donating two thousand dollars plus doing, furnishing all the labor to set everything up for them, and then on top of that, they, 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 they put down that they took in thirty-five hundred dollars in sponsorship, okay? If, if the city today is listed as a sponsor, why are we giving two thousand, they only took in thirty-five hundred, okay? So why are we paying the lion's share when we're paying, we're, they don't see our figures on the labor that we're paying, paying our employees, okay? And that's, that's why I brought it up. And also, they put down that they had the expense for the awards and stuff, well, I had three plaques hanging in my shop, and I, my car won them the Christmas parade, and they're all sponsored by a business that donated the money to buy those plaques. So, I, I'm for supporting them because I enter my, I, I enter my vehicle and I pay twenty dollars just like everybody else does. And we'll continue to support them and we'll furnish the labor to s, put the barricades out for them, uh, we'll, you know, we'll put out the, uh, uh, and pick it up afterwards and we'll send the street sweeper down to clean the street up afterwards because that is our street. So, I, I'm, I'm still, I'm still against giving them that much money. Now, I, I, I'd be glad to give them what their sponsorship fee is. If, if they're charging five hundred dollars for a sponsor, we could give them five hundred dollars, but why should the city today pay the lion's share on this when, when we're already doing our share? You know, we're saving them, if, if we didn't do this, they would have to either get volunteers or they would have to hire somebody to do what our people are doing. So, so that's my take.
So you're, you're suggesting that we take it down to five hundred rather than just in half, at a thousand?
Right.
I need it in the form of a motion.
You wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we reduce our Christmas, Christmas parade support, continue with the, the setting up the barricades and the police department and everything that the city has done in the past, but actually funding them with five hundred dollars.
I'll second that. Does that motion though need, I mean, should I make a separate motion about it coming out of the CB CD fund, or how, how would you like to approach that?
Uh, Bob's already made the motion that it comes out of a.
Dollar, I doubt you should ever hear that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Uh, roll call vote please.
Robinson.
No.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
No.
Bliss.
No.
What's the count?
Five, three.
Okay, well, you guys, I didn't have a great time, alright.
Well, wait a minute, I'm gonna make a motion that we fund it for a thousand dollars.
Uh, okay.
I need a second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call vote please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
No.
Marshall.
No.
Bogus.
No.
Hiller.
No.
Cross.
No.
Foster.
No.
Bliss.
Yes.
Three, five now.
I tried, I tried more two, I tried Christmas.
You tried Christmas.
Six, six, oh, two, two, four, six again?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have ourselves a council meeting, y'all.
Well, it's gotta be fun sometime.
So.
So we ended up at five hundred.
If I'm right, basically, it's, we're gonna fund it at five hundred.
Correct.
It's the pleasure of council, right?
There we go.
So it's in the five hundred, so I have to show it as, we adjusted the draft by fifteen hundred.
Oh, man.
Okay, so Councilman Oldham, do you wanna look at anything out of the CB CD?
No, my only thing was wanting to move the Christmas funding to the CB CD.
So are you putting that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion that, uh, the Christmas parade fund moved from the general fund to the CB CD fund.
The expenditure of five hundred dollars.
The expenditure of five hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll say that.
I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call vote please.
Robinson.
No.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss. Doesn't make any difference now.
Alright, thank you, council.
I'm just sticking with Janet.
Six, two.
Six, two in favor, right? Okay, so we gotta, um, we're gonna add five hundred here, right?
Can I make a comment, please? I, I wonder how, I wonder if you all know where the CB CD money comes from? It's a, it's a downtown tax specifically on those people. And in the past, they built that parking lot across the street from us here, they built the parking lot behind the venue over, over there, so that is really not general tax funds, that is funds specifically charged to the people downtown.
So are you saying all of the funds with the CBD, CB CD accounts are tax dollars that can only be used for?
No, no, I'm just stating where they come from, specifically from downtown.
Yeah, but the Christmas parade is downtown, so, and it's a benefit for all the citizens of Soudalia.
Well, but there are restrictions on those funds, that they have to be spent within the business district, and, but the Christmas parade is held.
I guess that, yeah.
District, so I think legally you all can do that, but I think, uh, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Councilman Robinson, but I think his, his point is that, that, uh, it's not, not necessarily, um, uh, to the benefit of only.
That's correct.
Any further discussion?
So, correct me or, or unmud my mind, it'll take a minute, do we need to put this back in our general fund rather than from the CB CD?
I, I think that's a council choice.
Okay.
That's a council decision.
We just made it, didn't we?
John, would you agree it is, it is allowable?
It is allowable of, you know, marketing or special within the downtown district.
Yeah, so it's a council decision and it sounds like you guys made it.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure that we wasn't moving something to a area that we, we really shouldn't be moving it to. I'm, I'm okay.
Okay. Anything else that council wants to look at again? Comfortable with where we're at wage wise?
I think that was a good job, Kelvin. It's been well received from the things I've heard.
A lot of helping it.
One thing that's come up recently is the Knox boxes, well, it's come up again, it's come up several times, and the requirement for Knox boxes, uh, myself and Administrator Shaw were talking about before the meeting, uh, there is a possibility of taking and, uh, doing a cost share arrangement with those business owners that are starting up and changing the use of their buildings to where we paid for half of that Knox box at two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we kinda did some back to the math in math and that will work out to about, oh, three, thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred dollars a year, uh, would that be something that council, that council will be interested in entertaining?
I've got one question, and that is, do police use knock boxes too, or is it just fire?
They're fired, yeah, and should we run them in that area? Because if we run EMS, we have to respond on that call, so we can see Knox, we can see the box open for EMS, or not, they open for the response.
What was your request again, I'm sorry?
So it would be, we would do a cost share arrangement with the business owner where we would pay for half of that Knox box, work out to about two hundred and fifty dollars, and you're looking at, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars a year.
I've, I've got another question.
Go ahead.
And I don't wanna apologize if I, I don't wanna walk on you. Um, how long have we been requiring a Knox box?
I'll come on, you may have a question for the hundred.
No, that's not it, that's.
So, back in two thousand and one, when city council, um, adopted the International Fire Code, um, two thousand and one version, Knox boxes were incorporated in that fire code. So our first Knox box was installed in December of two thousand and one.
Okay.
And we have been carrying those Knox boxes over through each version of the fire code. We're now on two thousand and fifteen, we're looking to go to two thousand and twenty-one. That Knox box has been carried over and it, it is not something, a section that you, we, that you vote on specifically for Knox boxes, it is incorporated with the entire fire code.
Got one more. How many Knox boxes are there in Soudalia?
Three hundred and two, three, three hundred and two, three hundred and two. We only require Knox boxes to go on new construction, fifty percent remodel, or change of occupancy. I, like I explained to the mayor and city administrator, fire code does not give an exception for Knox boxes, you know, we've, we've discussed in the past, sprinkler systems, get grandfathered in if it's an older building, Knox boxes do not have a grandfather or an exception. If the council so chose, we could go enforce Knox boxes on every business in the city and basically make them put them up in all and all of them because they are not exempt, they're not, they're not grandfathered in for their current business. We don't do that, I'm not recommending that we do that, I'm just recommending that we keep the current process that we have because they are useful.
I, I don't have any problem with that, I, what I'm getting to is, and, and I think I would have to abstain from voting, uh, is reimbursing everybody that's had to pay for a Knox.
And that's, and, and that's what you look at, and you, and, and I don't wanna start an argument.
Or, or partially reimbursing, or, I mean, why in twenty twenty-three do these folks get a cost share when Val and I put one in three, four, five years ago?
Uh, you were.
There were other people since twenty, two thousand and one, really, you know, I, I've got a, but, but, in, I, in other words, I'm really trying to, I, I'm not worried about us, but I, I really do think we've gotta consider the folks that have.
And the Knox box is about four hundred and, I think, four hundred and fifty bucks is what?
Five hundred?
Five hundred bucks?
Of course, I wonder what the, you have any idea what they cost in two thousand and one?
Oh, they weren't that much, no. Um, but they are, I, I, right at five hundred bucks for a box. They are UL listed, so.
Going.
Go ahead.
I don't think the ISO at all.
What about, would you guys install them? I mean.
We could install them, yeah, I mean, that would be something that would do, but then you look, then you're, then you run the risk if, if, because we would have to go into like the brick facing if we did, if the fire department did damage or the property, if they weren't square.
You guys could do it.
I have a lot of confidence in my guys and you're absolutely correct, but there would be somebody that would say, hey, the box is not square.
We could offer, we could make the offer.
Yeah.
We could make the offer and say, hey, you're gonna hold this harmless if we nick this or break that.
I, I don't necessarily think it's the install that is the issue, it is, it's the actual purchasing of the box.
For most of the people, it's an additional cost. I'm just thinking of all, I'm thinking of alternative, I can, trying to think of an alternative I can live with.
And we do pride ourselves on doing business and developing product, and that's part of the reason bringing this up.
I think it's a good idea, but I also think what Councilman Bliss said, well, what about the people that had to get it previously, what would you do?
Nothing, this would just be going forward.
If we're confident in that, I'll make that motion to bring in thirty-five hundred dollars per year for the Knox boxes.
I'll say that.
I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I didn't hear anybody.
I am.
Okay, roll call.
I'm, I'm not having a vote, I'm not opposed to vote.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Do I need to stay?
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
No.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
No.
Bliss.
Maybe.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Last three.
Last three.
Alright, thank you. If it was easy date, I'll be unanimous of.
Yeah, no, that's how, that's how it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay, anything else? Anything on transportation you wanna look at for the CIP?
Can, can we just go back to transportation tab and scroll up, please? Help me remember, as I've been looking at stuff. I think I'm okay, I think we're okay, I, I remember what concerned me, it's not that big a deal, okay, I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll be gone. The finance department has identified records that have met their retention requirements and recommend disposal of them.
I have a motion and a second.
Motion's approved.
Second. Thank you.
Fourth item is a call for awareness to accept this telecommunication contract with Socket Telecom LLC. This contract is the service, if, if the service areas that still require old technology copper wires needs to support some equipment such as elevator emergency lines and fax machines. Staff has obtained a competing quote from Socket for the service of these lines, staff is also reviewing the need for these lines with the possibility of eliminating them.
Any council discussion? Any council discussion? Having heard none, call for reading the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-six. An ordinance authorizing a telecommunications service contract with Socket Telecom LLC.
Second reading, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-six. An ordinance authorizing a telecommunications service contract with Socket Telecom LLC.
Final passage, second.
Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All right, uh, my final item tonight is our I T manager, Monty Richardson, has successfully, was successful in securing a cybersecurity grant in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. This grant is to assist the city in reducing cyber attack risk. The grant requires, would require the city to match with seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. This will require ordinance to accept the grant.
I would point out, uh, Mr. Richardson is, is, um, online if anybody had any questions. I got him muted. Any council discussion regarding the item? Call for reading the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-seven. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a state and local cybersecurity grant.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-seven. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a state and local cybersecurity grant.
Final passage, second.
Roll call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
That is all I have, your honor.
Thank you Chairman Marshall. Up next we have, uh, public safety, Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
We have a need for, uh, an ordinance to help, to allow us to apply for an enforcement grant. Chief, would you like to come up and elaborate on this and the other one, Beth?
Sure, the first one is, uh, D W I enforcement grant. The bulk of this share is to help, uh, purchase and, uh, a vehicle and then purchase vehicle, uh, equipment for that vehicle for D W I enforcement as part of a highway safety campaign. Um, the second grant is for hazardous moving violation, uh, overtime pay, that's what it's strictly for. So it allows us to bring officers in on their time off and hook overtime to help reduce accidents.
Any council discussion regarding the, uh?
Yeah, chief, chief, you might add, uh, I know Calvin and I were at your banquet. We had two officers that wrote two hundred and sixty-seven D W I charges last year, so they're out there doing their job, I'm proud of them.
Any other council discussion regarding the two ordinance?
Can, can I get a point clarification? We, we don't need a resolution, we just need a grant to apply for, I mean, an ordinance to apply for a grant?
Uh, this is, the, the, the grant requirements are different for each grant, I mean.
Okay, that's what I've.
So call for reading the first ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-eight. An ordinance authorizing the grant application for D W I enforcement.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-eight. An ordinance authorizing a grant application for D W I enforcement.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Any council discussion regarding the, uh, ordinance with relative to hazardous moving violations and the grant application? Having heard none, call for reading the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-nine. An ordinance authorizing a grant application for hazardous moving violations.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-nine. An ordinance authorizing a grant application for hazardous moving violations.
Final passage, second.
Roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
We also need, uh, permission to destroy some police records.
Much to approve, records destruction.
Second, second. Thank you. Thank you Chairman Robinson. Up next we have Public Works.
We need a vote. Uh, we need to vote, we had a motion in a second, we did not vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Uh, thank you Chairman Robinson. Uh, next we have Public Works, Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
I have one item tonight, uh, so this, and I have just a little bit of a discussion with it. Uh, the Parks Department has worked to pull together a policy for when alcohol would be allowed in the parks. Since alcohol is prohibited in the city parks by ordinance, council would have to take specific action to make such allowances. Uh, Director Amy Epley is here if we have any questions. I did have a couple and I apologize that I wasn't able to get in contact with you sooner. Um, it, it's a little different when we're working with specific venues. You know, we can only have one group there at a time. When we're working with our parks, like Liberty Park, that's forty acres, you know, including your, your, your buildings there. And a hundred people is not really a lot of people compared to when the, um, police there. Is there a limit to how many permits can be issued per day per park?
Uh, there is not a limit that was put in place for that policy, no, there was not.
So, in essence, could there be two or three per issued, permits issued for a single?
I mean, there possibly could be, yes, there could be. I mean, the policy that we put in place that the park board adopted is a pretty strict policy. I wouldn't see that, they're going to have to put money in place to be able to, um, provide alcohol at their events or at a special event. Um, so I don't see that, but it is possible if they would, wouldn't say no.
Is there a minimum number of attendees required for a permit to be issued?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Is there a minimum number of attendees required for a permit to be issued?
No, there's not.
This is, this is one that I just had a little concern about, I mean, I have full faith that directly with you, who runs the parks, that absolutely, I, but when we talk about our park system, I, I mean, I don't have, I'm preaching to the choir, it rivals no other parks in Missouri. Um, but there's just something about our parks being able to be maintained as family-friendly, family-oriented. No smart, smoke, smoking allowed, uh, you know, alcohol's been allowed, you know, we, we could also.
And I will have to stop, there has been alcohol, the city council has approved for alcohol to be in the park in previous years with different functions as well.
Okay.
So this isn't something that has never been done, um, but you know, I know when it's been before, the Lions Club did, uh, of, an event in the park about four years ago, my first year at Liberty, um, they did that, there were three officers. We used those same rules that we, um, but it just was never established, it was just a, okay, here's this event came, brought to us and we, and we approved it, it went to city council, it was approved. Um, so park board just said, hey, this has came to us now, this is, you know, the fourth time. Why don't we establish a policy for the Parks Department, set up an application process and then take it to city council instead of having to do it every single time and not necessarily having set in stone rules. Um, it was just kind of, okay, they came with us, let's put this. Um, like, by two CDs, so it goes across the K D Park, that's been at K D Park as well. Um, again, following the same guidelines and everything that we passed. I just wanted to clarify that it's not the first time, but I just, um, and that was the reason, it was just said, um, um, and that's what we did and we just wanted to bring it forward and, and see what your guys have thought about it. So this was, um, we did, like I said before, we've had alcohol three other times, um, in the parks. This would be the first time at the Hecker.
And this is just a policy, the applications still have to come to council and the park board for review, correct?
Correct.
Unless you change your ordinance.
Right.
But right now, the way your ordinance reads, you would have to suspend that ordinance because it's codified, there's no alcohol allowed. So much like we do downtown for open containers, you'd have to specifically allow it or suspend that.
So at the park and the city level, so interesting?
Well, I, only, only council can override an ordinance. So you would have to, you'd have to pass a specific ordinance that would allow it each specific time.
Oh, okay.
Or you'd have to repeal the prohibition altogether and allow it to be by policy that the park board. So you could delegate it to the park board if you wanted.
But the way it's now, it's not.
Yeah, the way the current code is.
It's still going to be.
You have to suspend that every time for every event. And as I understand, um, what, what they're proposing, this is, here's a policy that would bring those forward. So it's just really outlining how they bring those applications forward and standardize, is my correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, you've met, you've met this, instead of requirements that's outlined in the policy, now you can make application with a park board and city council.
So the event says, event only for guests twenty-one years and older, so only, only, so the, the dog, when I was on park board, which I deserve no for, was to have liquor at the dog, what was it, wag and something, whatever that was.
Park in the park.
So, so you would not be having that, because there were kids there, there were all ages there, so if there's alcohol, there's not going to be anyone under twenty-one.
So it would not be an event, so an outside event, you have to have it fenced off, so no one, um, under.
But that's specifically said, event only for, that's why I'm asking, like that, pretty specific line right there.
Right, so it would be fenced off, it would be off in private. Now, whole park, you can't close down the park if it's Liberty or K D, but it would be fenced off and that's what they did, the Lions Club did at the park in the park when they did that, there was a fence that was all, um, established in the park that they set up, that they paid for. Um, and then the two police officers that they had paid more were there as well. So inside the facility were, um, the vents withheld, that's where the music was and all the vendors were inside that gated area. Um, but you had to be twenty-one, um, they had people carding to make sure that you were twenty-one to get inside that, get inside the event.
So if you had an event at the Hecker Community Center, if people were drinking, would, they would have to stay in.
Yeah, so they would have to come in, they have to come in on.
That's pretty, that's one big building with a lot of kids.
Yeah, so the Hecker Community Center is a little easier to, to separate, um, so they would have to come in and that's something we've already talked to the seniors and about. Um, but they would have to come in on the south side, um, off the patio and they would have to rent all, that whole space, all three community rooms. And then it's, um, those doors would be closed at the other end. So all the entrance and exit would be, um, through the patio, not through the main, um, Hecker Community Center.
So how would you keep people drinking from going into the pool area or in, onto the basketball court or being?
So they would have staff, they're going to have staff that is right there at the door, just like if it was a gate or anything else, that you cannot go past this area. And then before you leave the facility, you cannot take alcohol with you either. Um, so they have in, this entrance doors blocked, just like we do for, not alcohol, but if we have a semi formal or anything like that, just a little bit, you have little scores, we have staff at each door, so they're not leaving once their parents drop them off and we make sure that they're picked up by who dropped them off as well. So it's a lot easier at the Hecker with the two entrances.
Well, Amy, I think you do a good job, but I will, I'm just going to add this. My phone blew up today. The, the third ward does not want alcohol in the Hecker. Now, if you want to have it somewhere else, there, there's plenty of venues downtown that they can rent to have their park. And, and that's, that's what they threw up to me and, and I kind of agree with them. Um, I don't think, I don't think that's what that was built for, to, to have, and I know it's a fundraiser and all that, and I get all that, I do a fundraiser myself, so but, but there's no alcohol at my deal either, so I just, you know, I, I'm having a hard time dealing with this, uh.
And Bob, this is a point of clarification, this is not with regards to that specific application, this is a policy. By, like I said, a guideline that they have to meet in order for them to just apply to have it anywhere within the park.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment also. I think the city council has been lenient, uh, allowing alcohol, uh, downtown events. But I, I feel that we don't need to have alcohol in our city parks. Or the, uh, uh, community center, and I affirmably know, we do not need alcohol in our, in our city parks.
Okay.
It's not nothing against you.
Oh, you're fine, that's, you, you guys are, that everyone is entitled to their family and their thing. No, you're fine, you do not have to explain yourself, you're fine, thank you.
Any further council discussion? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three forty. An ordinance adopting a policy regarding alcohol in city parks.
Second reading.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Can we get a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three forty. An ordinance adopting a policy regarding alcohol in city parks.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Oldham?
No.
Marshall?
No.
Bogus?
No.
Hiller?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
No.
Thank you council.
That's all I have, your honor.
All right. Thank you Chairman Oldham, you have a draw, can you develop it? Uh, Chairwoman Foster?
No, report to C B.
All right. Other business, we have liquor licenses to approve, uh, call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have one new license and one renewal. We have a new license for Garrett Volker doing businesses, Volker's Eatery and Pub, ten twenty-one South Limit for Sedalia Annual Pub Crawl, Downtown Sedalia on March eighteenth for a picnic license and a renewal for Amy Von Holton doing businesses, Aldi number eighty-eight at thirty-seven oh one West Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Much to approve and block.
Second. All those in favor?
Thanks.
All those opposed? Thank you. Uh, next we have Ms. Lane, signs from city council, city administrator, anybody have anything they want to share?
Yes, I would like to say, uh, I'm glad to see that there are a lot of no votes on issues because a lot of times you hear from the public saying, oh, the city council rubber stamped everything that you bring to them, they guess. I'm glad to see some no votes.
So my apologies to council, I am not feeling the greatest tonight and I skipped over the vote with regard to finance administration. You approved of the, uh, records, uh, destruction request from the finance department. Can I get a motion in a second on that? Uh, so we're, I didn't get a vote on it, so.
Most different.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, and I apologize about that, I, like I said, just not feeling so hot tonight. All right, now we have, uh, Goodenwalter, any items from the, anyone from the audience, if you want to step to the mic, come up, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Don't be bashful.
Seeing no comments? Saying seeing no comments, can we look?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn to closed-door session for legal advice, real estate and negotiated contracts.
Second. See, roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second to reopen the regular meeting?
Motion to open, open session.
Can we get a second?
Roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
First item on the agenda is a ordinance approving the sale of the property located in two hundred South Marvin. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three forty-one. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as two hundred South Marvin from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to L H B Investments LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Second reading.
Second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-three forty-one. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as two hundred South Marvin from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to L H B Investments LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Okay, the next item I have on the agenda is an ordinance approving the opioid settlement agreement. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 202342. An ordinance approving and accepting an addendum, addendum to the Missouri State Local Government Opioid Litigation Memorandum of Understanding.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Bill number 202342. An ordinance approving and accepting an addendum to the Missouri State Local Government Opioid Litigation Memorandum of Understanding.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?